I just want to remind you to unmute, please.
That would help. Thank you, Ms. Katzenbach. Good evening. The time is now 6:30 PM on Monday, June 3, 2024, and I call this open meeting of the Lexington Select Board to order. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format via Zoom. Members of the public can view and participate in the meeting from their devices by clicking on the link posted with the agenda. Please note this meeting is being recorded, and we're also being broadcast live and for future on-demand viewing by Lex Media. All materials provided to members of this board are also available to the public. This evening, all board members are in person. I'm Doug Mussetti, the Select Board Chair. To my right is Joe Paddo. On his right is Vice Chair Jill Hay. On my left is Susie Barry, and on her left is Mark Sandin. Joining us from staff this evening is Town Manager Jim Malloy, Deputy Town Manager Kelly Axtell, and joining us remotely is the Select Board Executive Clerk Kim Katzenbach. First thing on our agenda is to do an executive session. We have three executive session items, so I'm going to move that we go into executive session for three items. First is under exemption, exemption six, to consider the purchase of real property. Second is under exemption four, to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices related to the security planning for the dignitary visits for the 250th anniversary of the Battle of Lexington celebration. And third is under exemption six, to consider the value of real property related to parcel 68-44 located on Lowell Street. Further, as Chair, I declare that an open meeting on these items may have a detrimental effect on either the negotiating position or security measures of the town. Further, the Select Board will reconvene in open session at the end of our executive session, which should be approximately 7:00 PM. To go into executive session by roll call vote, Ms. Hay?
Yes.
Mr. Paddo?
Yes.
My vote is yes. Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Sandin?
Yes.
Motion passes. We are now in executive session. I'll ask all members, the audience, to please leave the room, and the room will reopen approximately 7:00 PM.
Okay, we have the Select Board meeting live.
Yeah, Ms. Katzenbach, can you hear us?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Susie, I'm gonna sure if your mic's on?
No, we're just gonna get started now, so.
Do you have hybrid meeting picked? For the microphone system?
Can you hear my, can you hear me, Ms. Katzenbach?
I can, if you want to use that. I just need to make sure, I'm just not sure what'll happen when the audience or other presenters speak, if they're at the desk or not.
Can someone else try a microphone?
Is mine working? Everybody sounds good so far?
I think we're okay, Ms. Katzenbach. All right, so we're gonna get, welcome back to our open session portion of the meeting for those just joining us, the Select Board held an executive session at the beginning of our meeting. We will now open the floor up for general public comment during tonight's session. As we begin, I'd like to remind everyone that we are all neighbors and working together in our community's best interest. I ask that all comments be made with civility and respect and without casting aspersions or reference to motives. Open public comments are for items not otherwise covered on our agenda. Public comments are allowed for up to 10 minutes, and each speaker is limited to two minutes. Members of the Board will neither comment nor respond other than to ask clarifying questions. Remote attendees who have dialed in by telephone should press star nine to be recognized or click on the raise hand button on Zoom. If you're joining us in person, please approach the microphone. When you're recognized to speak, please state your name, address, and any relevant Board or committee affiliation. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on an item that is not covered elsewhere on tonight's agenda? Please step up to the microphone. You can turn the microphone on.
On the top, there's a slide.
If you could state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Sorrellablyman Cohen, 17, Dan Road. I would like to talk again about the project for the high school. The first point is the budget. I would like to ask that the town sets a budget for the new high school. When you go and you buy a new house, you first decide how much you can afford and then what that can buy you, not the other way around. I think that's true for the high school as well. The town already owes 209 millions and to add over 500 million, and by the time all is said and done, it's going to be higher. I feel this is fiscally irresponsible. I would like to ask the Select Board to instruct the School Building Committee to direct SMMA to come up with lower-cost alternatives. My next point is lack of communication and transparency. There are many people in town that are unaware of the high school project and the cost. There is a website, but not everyone knows of the website. I would like to propose a town hall meeting quarterly where a dialogue can take place, just like the president holds town hall meetings. There is a design session coming up on June 6. I would like to request that people from the Select Board attend. Last, I've approached town committee members and asked to have meeting with them. Only a handful responded. I believe that any selected person should have to meet with town residents and that they should have emails that we can access them through. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing no one online and seeing no one else standing at the microphone, we're gonna move on to our Select Board Concerns and Liaison Reports. Colleagues, we had written comments submitted in our packet for myself and Mr. Paddo. If there are additional verbal comments, I'm gonna ask that we push that to the end of the agenda because we do have a lot to cover this evening, and we're already a little bit behind. Mr. Malloy, is there a town manager's report this evening?
Just very quick, even though Town Council left earlier, I did want to thank him for his efforts on behalf of the town in regards to a, one of the town meeting articles that was being reviewed by the Attorney General's Office. They were initially going to decline it. They eventually, Mina, was able to convince them to approve it. And I just wanted to make sure everybody knew the town pool opened today and that we'll be discussing the process for proposals to provide clarity to senior management of the town so that we have a set process that we'll be using. We've got that on for June 17. And the last thing is, I've been asked a couple of times when the pavement markings will be done around Battle Green Streetscape. Those were scheduled to be done later this week, but if you've looked at the weather forecast, you see that it's going to be raining later this week, and so it may get pushed to next week, just so that everybody knows. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. Colleagues, we have a consent agenda that contains 12 items on it. The first item is to record Select Board Committee liaison assignments. Second is to accept Select Board Committee resignations, including Town Celebrations Committee Steve Cole Jr., fence viewers Julie Krakauer Moore. Third is to approve Select Board Committee appointment. That would be Town Celebrations Committee Subcommittee, excuse me, Steve Cole Jr. Fourth is to approve Town Manager Committee reappointment for the Council on Aging for Dr. Jotsna Kakula Varapu. Fifth is to approve and sign the comment letter regarding the EEA number 16654 for LG Hanscom Field, North Airfield Field Development. Sixth is an application for a one-day liquor license for the Dana Home Foundation with the Lexington Community Center for their foundation awards reception. Seventh is an application for the Battle Green permit for the William Diamond Jr. Fight and Drum Corps for the Battle Green Jam Session. Eighth is to approve and authorize Town Manager to sign an intermunicipal agreement. Ninth is to approve Select Board Meeting Minutes for May 6, 2024, and May 13, 2024. Tenth is an application for four one-day liquor licenses for a tapped beer truck at 35 Hartwell Ave for Xenon Property LLC, the tenant event. And eleventh is an application for an entertainment license for the Association of Black Citizens of Lexington, ABCL, for 1875 Massachusetts Avenue for the Fourth Annual Walk Walker Day Community Celebration. And finally, our 12th item is to approve fiscal year 2025 cost of living adjustment for nonrepresented employees. Do any members of the Board wish to have items removed from the consent agenda and considered individually? Okay, seeing none and seeing nothing else on the consent, I move to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded by all those in favor, say five, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous, five to zero. Okay, colleagues, our first item on the agenda this evening is for the Board to discuss the community profile and job description for the Town Manager Search Advertising. Our Select Board member Jill Hay, who's also chairing the Town Manager Search, Screening Search Committee, did I say that right? Such search screening, along with Bob Mercier from Municipal Resources, Inc., who are the consultants we hired to perform the search, will lead us through this item, and we'll start with Ms. Hay.
Thank you. So colleagues, in your packet, there is a document from MRI, which is their proposed initial recruiting advertising. It is, it's an ad. It's a selling document from us to, you know, actually from MRI technically, about us to the, to the community meant to sort of whet the appetite of potential candidates. And it has intentionally, it has descriptions, some broad overview of the community, but it's really aimed to outline the skills that we want and that we have said, the, the members of MRI actually sat with all of senior management. They sat with us, they sat with Mr. Malloy and Ms. Axtell. And, you know, while the goal, of course, is to tell a little about ourselves, we also want to encourage any serious individuals to, to do some homework and to prove to us that they, they did a little homework. And I will also say that, you know, we, we obviously can't describe everything that we do and everything that we are short of this lovely 218-page report. And so the outline of the document, essentially, the first page is just like a one-pager ad. Then there's a one-page minimum skill set, some demographic information about the community. I'm just sort of assuming that for those of you who are listening, you have read all of this. And then there's a little bit about Lexington history, including the upcoming 250th, our budget, some challenges that we face, which directly impact the skills that are required in a successful applicant. And those, you know, that sort of short list is relationship building, mentoring, visioning, planning, collective bargaining, financial acumen, building diversity and equity, capital planning, and adoption of the MBTA Communities Act and the impact both of the, the housing through that, but more generally on residents as well. And again, it, it doesn't mention, isn't meant to mention specific goals so much as to give people a general feel. So the, the two questions for us tonight are, A, can we approve this document subject to whatever minor edits we want to make in order to get it out this week? Because we want to have it on the street for about 30 days and to keep with the timeline that we would like to have, that ideally has us putting it out this week. And then the second question is, are we comfortable with the return deadline of Monday, July 8? I will say two things, well, three things. One, Mr. Mercier from MRI is with us as well, and he can talk a little more about, you know, their, their process at this point. And I will also say that I had two, two people contacted me today, and thank you to both Ms. Axtell pointed out to me that we did use the he or she a few different places in the document, and we really should take that gendered language out. So we are, I've already identified the, the three times that appears. We're taking that out. I've already discussed that with MRI. And then Mr. Sandin contacted me this afternoon as well, and he wanted further description about our sustainability agenda and sustainability practices. I did propose adding in some language on page eight, and I don't, and, you know, again, I don't want to get into a massive redrafting, so I'm gonna tell you what I had proposed and sent in. I know Mr. Sandin would like to add some more, and we can talk about what level, and I would recommend that we come to an agreement in a general and then let MRI deal with it rather than trying to draft here. What I had suggested was, in the sentence that currently starts the community, that I believe it says, "The community leaders are strongly supportive of sustainability initiatives", I changed to "The community and its leaders are strongly supportive of our sustainability initiatives, adopting both long and short-term goals for the town's infrastructure and new building, and new business and housing developments, locating or expanding in Lexington." Additionally, Lexington is one of 10 communities participating in the state's fossil-fuel-free demonstration program and recently adopted the Specialized Stretch Energy Code. So that was sort of what I felt was, and what Mr. Gold from MRI felt, was in parallel with what we talk about on other topics and was appropriate for an introduction on the topic generally. So all that said, Mr. Mercier, did I skip anything? And then we'll let Mr. Sandin as well. I know he has something to say. So Bob, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I, I think, I think. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me? Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I, I think, first of all, thank you to the Board members, and thank you to Jill and the committee. We had a, I want to say a robust discussion last week, and we came up with a document that I think is, is good and sufficient for Lexington moving forward. And I'm gonna give you a little commentary on that in a minute. But Jill has shared comments that she received with us. No problems at all. If you can get some approvals tonight, we can keep to the schedule. And ideally, that schedule would mean we'd like to advertise in the six New England associations, the ICMA, which is the International City Managers Association. And we will work with Ann from your office on reaching out to all of the minority groups that she already has a list of, so we'll get the advertisement there too. So to Jill's point, if we advertise this week, and given the holiday of July 4th and those type of things, we recommend a return date of July 8. So that will give people some sufficient time to, as Jill suggested, take a look at the town. Am I interested? Am I not interested? And I, I can tell you that there is some urgency to this. I heard today, and I got a call from my good friend Rich Montori over in Tewksbury. He announced his retirement. And they're talking tonight in Tewksbury about a schedule going forward for recruitment. We know, and it's pretty public, that Bill Ricker will likely be searching in the very near future. So there, there is some surge, some urgency in getting our message out and, and quickly, because people are gonna have choices in the not-too-distant future. Otherwise, as Jill suggested to you, whatever the changes are, I, I suggest they be relatively minor, only because, as Jill suggested, this is a notification to people. This is an overview of Lexington, not a detailed description of Lexington. We, we always want people who are interested in Lexington to actually do some research on Lexington. And this, this will prompt them to do that because they'll get a taste of some of the issues. But if they think they're gonna move forward with only a taste of the issues in Lexington, then they're mistaken, and we will find that out pretty quickly.
Thank you. Mr. Sandin?
So I, I, thank you, Jill. I did mention to Jill that I thought that the half a sentence on sustainability that was in the thing did not really reflect the town's commitment to sustainability, and I thought we should be expanding that and making it clear that this is one of the Select Board's priorities, not just community leaders. And so I appreciate, I hadn't, I hadn't heard Jill's proposal before this evening, but I, I think we could maybe add another sentence or two into that description, but along those lines would be very helpful. The other thing that Jill and I talked about earlier this, this afternoon, which we didn't, I think, just maybe forgot about, is that we're not mentioning in this thing the Select Board's commitment to affordable housing as well. And I think that it is one of the Select Board's highest priority goals, and I do think should be reflected in this document that, that we have created an Affordable Housing Trust, and there's a comprehensive plan that identifies this as a critical need and that we, Town Meeting has granted Select Board approval to move forward on affordable housing projects so that people understand this isn't just words that we're actually asking town staff to take significant action and on both sustainability issues. And to me, I think the skill set, it's important, there's, there's a lot of effort that goes into the town manager's day-to-day job about sustainability issues here, and I think we want to be faithful in our advertising about what we expect for the town manager going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sandin. Ms. Barry?
Ms. Hay, I have kind of a cleanup of the 250th line, which I'll send you.
Thank you. That'd be great.
Mr. Paddo?
And a minor correction to the name of the Minamerry General High School.
Also good.
And I have a minor correction on its specialized code, not specialized stretch energy code.
So actually, I, I did see that. And my question is, is that, while I totally agree with you that that is the technical name, is, and I don't know what the answer to this is, do we want to be technical or do we want to be more descriptive? Or do we assume that anybody who's reading this knows the technical?
I want to be correct.
So let me, let me ask a broader question of our Board, right? Because I think what was laid out here is a advertisement looking for a town manager. So do we feel, A, in general, that this met the mark? And B, do we feel like we want to stick to our timeline that we previously agreed to, to get this out by June 6 and returns by July 8? And I ask that because if we decide that's not the direction, we do not have a meeting on the 10th. The next earliest, next opportunity for us to discuss this would be July 17, so this would, in theory, push everything back two weeks. So I'm looking for some general consensus on that before we move forward with this discussion. Ms. Barry?
Yes, I'm fine with that. I just had one other question on page nine in the list of current capital projects. I think we could remove Century Streetscape and Battle Green Streetscape projects.
I took them out in the dialogue. I didn't notice that they were still in there. Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Paddo, you were gonna say?
So I was gonna say, I think this is fine with some minor editing as you're getting from members of the Board.
Okay, and I think, I would just like to, and I, I agree with Mr. Sandin, there's probably some more language we could use. I just, one of my worries is if we, if we pick this apart, I think each of us and all, if we look at all of our liaison roles, we could say, well, you didn't mention this project. You didn't mention Lowell Street project. You didn't mention the, whatever. You know, pick the project of the day, and it's not in there. And I understand the difference between a project and, you know, roles and responsibilities, but even if you went department by department, I'm sure someone would feel that we didn't necessarily represent. To Ms. Hay's point about the annual report, that's really, if they want to know what's happening in Lexington, read that. That's a great starting point.
But I do think it's important to identify that affordable housing is one of the select least, number-one goals.
And it does say, on page seven of this document, it does say the, the issue property tax increases is most acute among aging demographics. Less than a lack of affordable housing options for many, including seniors in the community, town manager must provide active invisible leadership in this important issue. So I think we're, we're putting it in there, like, this is an important issue, affordable housing, and maybe the town manager needs to be upfront.
To me, I, I regarded that conversation as more about seniors. It was sort of in a senior section as opposed to, it was about affordable housing for seniors in that section. And I was thinking that our commitment to affordable housing is broader than that. Obviously, it's one of the main motivations is affordable housing for our seniors, but broader than that. And I wanted to make it clear that we're actually taking action on this. Many communities talk the talk, but don't walk the walk, and we're, we're trying to walk the, walk the walk.
So I, I can jump in for one second. I, I agree, yes, and. That paragraph actually, while broken up by the page break, actually is a whole that says, you know, we're a desirable community, but here are the challenges. Housing's expensive. We, you know, we're trying to balance, you know, the issues of taxes, the issues of seniors. We have, you know, issues about economic development, traffic mitigation, transportation. It's all in that one paragraph, and that also was where the sustainability language was, which I cleaned up to make clear it wasn't a half-sentence. It was meant to be a full sentence. It was just a slightly difficult-to-read sentence. And so I'm happy to put in, in the same way that I added the sentence about sustainability, I think we can come to another sentence that includes the language about, you know, commitment to increasing affordable housing by being the first community in the Commonwealth. I think we say somewhere else about the first community in the Commonwealth. So maybe, actually, I take it back. That's the better place to put it, after the first community in the Commonwealth to develop, to adopt the MBTA Communities Act and subsequent to that adopted the Affordable Housing Trust so that we have those action steps. Because I think that's what's relevant, is what are the types of actions we take? And then what are the skills we want out of the person? It's not their job description. It's not their goals document. It is, again, and cards on the table. After I read the first draft of this, I called MRI and said, this is supposed to be a sales document. Are we unreasonable? I mean, are we, like, there's a lot in here already. So I just want to be mindful and balance that too.
Yeah. At some point, we need to give someone the veto power to say, okay, this is, this word's going in, this word's going out. I'm going to suggest and recommend that any edits be approved by Ms. Hay, and she'll have the final say. I think we're talking in general that this is very good. This, again, is not a document that we are releasing. It is a document being released by MRI. It's their document. This is not our document. We're just, we're putting in our, what we want to see in it.
It's our document.
Well, it's on their letterhead. And, you know, with all due respect, it's, it's, yes, we've hired them to do this, but they're also trying to advertise and, and get that part of the job done. So, Mr. Malloy?
I, I have one comment on the entire thing. Normally, I wouldn't really comment on this, but in the very first sentence, it says, Lexington is steeped in American history and considered by many historians to be the birthplace of American history. I think it's supposed to be liberty there, not history.
Yep. Forgot to call to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good catch. All right, so colleagues, just looking for consensus as it is, this is a comfortable way for everybody to move forward, and we'll stick to the dates that we have already, already established. I'm, I'm not gonna take public comment on this item because this is an advertisement. This is not, this isn't a big decision point, so.
And I have just one more thing if I can. So in addition, I just wanted to note that the committee has set the date for the public listening sessions to balance what you just said. And I will be working with Jonas tomorrow to get that out. They're gonna be next Wednesday, the 12th. There will be both a morning and an evening session, and there will be a separate half hour that we will be specifically inviting all former Select Board members to attend. And that, those will be held at the library. That, that information will be going out tomorrow.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I, did I make one comment?
Please.
So, thank you. Thank you for the feedback. We will work with Jill, hopefully, as you guys authorize, moving forward. And I just wanted to say, you're pretty fortunate. I just see it. I don't know if Kim saw it, but Buzz is joining us from Singapore. So our recruitment is reaching into Singapore.
Is there anything else on this item? If not, we're gonna move on because we are, we are about half hour behind. Half hour behind. So, all right, thank you, colleagues. We're gonna move on to our second.
Mr. Mussetti, did you want to take the promo vote?
I don't know that we need to take it. Oh, we, we, all right, I'll take it.
We don't have to, but.
Okay. I move to approve the Town Manager Recruitment Document as presented, subject to. as presented, subject to revisions, um, discussed by the board and with the final approval by Ms. Hay. Uh, and to post the materials by June sixth through July eighth, twenty twenty four. Is there a second?
Second.
Moving second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it is unanimous, five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to our second item on the agenda this evening, which is for the board to receive a presentation on single use plastic bottle phase out policy. Uh, and to dis- discuss a draft policy. I know Maggie Peard, our Sustainability Resilience officers in the audience, I believe. She is listed as a co-host.
Here, um, but this is not my item. We have, there's some high school students who are presenting.
I did not have a lead person in the agenda. Mr. Pato, do you know who's leading this charge? I'll turn it over to you.
Right, so it's, uh, Ellen Ho, I believe. Eileen, I, thank you for correcting me because I was gonna say Eileen, I said, no, no, but, um, so Eileen Ho and these were members of the, um, uh, working with green teams and I've uh, the Lexington Envirothon and Green Team. And Ms. Ho, if you wouldn't mind coming up here to the table and bring whoever else from your group you would want for the presentation.
Yes, you can, two of you can sit up there, and then if the others want to just pull a chair up closer to the table, that would be great.
So, so while they're coming up and get ready, I just want to set the context of, um, uh, Ms. Ho and the group uh, had, uh, earlier this year sent us a proposed proposal for how the town would stop acquiring and distributing its own single use plastic bottles. This was prior to town meetings, uh, hearing of the bylaw change, and their proposal is still relevant. So they were going to present the motivations and then the substance.
Just press it. Okay, perfect. Um, so thank you for having us here. Uh, my name is Eileen. Um, and we're all part of, as some of you already know, um, we're part of Lexington Envirothon. Uh, so what we are is we're a student led environmental club at Lexington High School. And we do compete in the state and national Envirothon competition, but recently we've also committed to increasing youth participation in climate action. And so today we're here to present a policy we created alongside the Lexington Green Team, which would phase out the purchase and use of single use plastic bottles, um, in Lexington schools and government agencies. So today we're gonna introduce, uh, I mean, we're gonna talk about what the problem is with plastic bottles. Um, and then we're gonna introduce the precedent and then pose, um, our policy.
Uh, so before we get into our policy itself, let's talk about plastic bottles themselves and, um, what kind of impacts they have on the environment and what we define them as. Uh, and so as defined by Mara Healy, uh, a plastic bottle is a beverage in a sealed rigid plastic bottle having a capacity of twenty one fluid ounces or less. Uh, for our purposes, we actually redefine this definition. We said it's a beverage in a sealed rigid plastic bottle or plastic lined carton excluding cartons from milk, milk varieties or juices that are part of the National School Lunch Program or School Breakfast Program, having a capacity of twenty one fluid ounces or less.
To help substantiate the issue at hand, we picked a few statistics to demonstrate the clear trend of negative health consequences caused by consuming bottled water. Um, a study, sorry, next slide. Thank you. Um, a study conducted by Columbia University in February twenty twenty four used newfound technology known as Raman scattering imaging to detect a whopping one hundred ten thousand to three hundred seventy thousand nanoplastic and microplastic particles per liter of bottled water. This is a substantial increase from the count of three hundred twenty five in the study conducted in twenty eighteen. So with this new breakthrough with the health risk of consuming bottled water is ever more alarming.
Such high amounts of, such high amounts of microplastics weaken the immune system by disrupting the production of key proteins. Furthermore, chemical compounds found in P T, P E T and B P A plastic water bottles leach into water over time. So the, when these, uh, when these chemical compounds are consumed frequently, they can disrupt endocrine signaling, then in people, especially children, then become more susceptible to various health complications such as obesity, altered brain development, heart complications, and even cancer. Unfortunately, the FDA provides little protection for these issues, and they do not require plastic water bottle companies to lab test their water, share their findings, or even state their water source.
Despite the disposal of plastic into landfills, ultimately, one point seven million tons of plastic end up in the ocean annually, which threatens ninety percent of seabirds and endangers fifteen percent of marine species due to ingestion and entanglement. Moreover, the production of plastic itself is harmful, generating two point five million tons of CO two annually during production and bottling, which is two thousand times the energy needed to process tap water.
Plastic water bottles companies, recently, the solution to these issues is recycling. However, studies have shown that plastic water bottles can only be recycled one to two times before they lose their structure. Thus, plastic water bottles can only be recycled, not downcycled, not recycled, as the plat- length of the plastic polymers shortens each time it's recycled. Furthermore, ninety three percent of plastic bottles that are recycled are tossed in landfills anyways.
Okay, so, uh, now we'd like to discuss the precedent for this policy. And so this all starts, uh, in September twenty third, twenty twenty three, when Maggie, uh, Mara Healy issued her executive order six hundred nineteen. And so what that did, it immediately banned the sale of single use plastic bottles to, uh, government authorities and agencies uh, that were smaller than twenty one fluid ounces in volume. And it also encouraged them to like submit the steps they've taken to reduce plastic, uh, single use plastic bottle consumption before the end of twenty twenty three. And then it also encouraged like quasi-public authorities and boards to reduce their, like, adopt plans to reduce plastic use before the end of twenty twenty three.
Uh, so in terms of local legislation, uh, Concord set our first precedent in twenty twenty, uh, twenty thirteen. But over the years, many towns have adopted similar legislative measures. Uh, importantly, Arlington, uh, which is a town situated near ours, and Markers Vineyard, uh, which addresses uses for bottles for other than simply just water, um, were important sources of in, uh, inspiration for our policy. Uh, and as seen by their success, the ban has, um, been effective, and it provides a strong example for, um, our policy moving into the future.
In fact, Lexington, as many of you know, um, passed a policy this April in town meeting eliminating the sale of single use plastic water bottles townwide. However, this has two important distinctions from our policy. First of all, our, our policy only applies to town agencies and schools. This is obviously the town agency side of things. But it's still relevant because many of these large organizations buy their water in bulk outside of town. So, um, yeah. Also, our policy targets all, um, beverages of single use, single use beverages, single use plastic bottles, um, any beverage, sorry. Compared to the town policy, it only targets unflavored, uncarbonated water. Our next slide, please. Um, so we actually talked to the leaders of the policy, um, you know, spearheads in Concord and Arlington, um, just their, their experiences. What we found was that after just a few years, the policy is running very smoothly, less than, less than that in Arlington and, um, other towns. And they also said that it was very important to install more water bottle filler fans, for example, in the school or in town buildings. And they also stressed the importance of outreach to make sure everyone knows what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Our policy goes as follows. Effective immediately after passing, every town department, including schools, offices, and the community center should limit the purchase, use, or sale of single use plastic bottles with the intent of a complete phase out within one year.
Yeah. Uh, so all the feedback that we heard from these different groups, we incorporated into a few exceptions to our policy. So that includes when there's no alternative available for plastic bottles, if plastic bottle use is required for health and safety, if its plastic bottles are used in preparation for or in response to an emergency, or if the policy violates any existing contract, uh, requirements or labor agreements.
Over the past few months, we reached out to three town regulated agencies, the police, fire, and public works departments. We received a positive response from the Lexington Police Department, who had received stainless water bottles and built water filters into their station.
Um, we also talked extensively with the, um, Lexington Public School, um, food service provider, in our case, Wytson's, um, in conjunction with the Lexington High School Finance Department. And we're pleased to say we reached a consensus with all affected parties. Um, and Wytson's has agreed to remove all its single use plastic bottles, um, this summer, paving the way for a plastic bottle free, uh, school year next year. And so that was our policy. Um, we thought it was really important as Lexington's youth to not only speak up because of the, uh, dangerous implications of plastic water bottles, but also to show that Lexington's youth do truly care about the environment. And we hope that you'll take these factors into consideration regarding a policy and can reach an agreement. Thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you all so much. One of the things we didn't do, which we need to do for our record is, could each of you just take the mic and, I know, Eileen? Uh, but if, if you could state each of your names, just so we could have it in our public record, please.
Uh, my name is Percival Yu.
My name, my name is Nalini.
My name is Caroline Eamon.
My name is Erin Sa.
My name is Jocelyn Chen.
I'm Tomer Okayem.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, um, I'm gonna open it up for, uh, our board to discuss. Uh, we also do have with us, as I mentioned earlier, Maggie Peard, our Sustainability and Resilience Officer. If the board has any questions, um, but we'll open it up to the floor. Colleagues. Mr. Pato.
So I want to thank this group for, for all the work they've done and for bringing us a policy that actually is complimentary to the town bylaw that, uh, we have passed. For, for municipal government, I think this largely affects some of our cafeterias or, um, vending machines that currently have soda bottles alike, for which there are reasonable e- easy alternatives to switch to canned goods. So I think this carries us forward as a, um, a standard bearer in how to reduce consumption of plastics and the exposure to the environment. So thank you. And, uh, and Mr. Malloy, I believe that you reviewed the policy that the group had put together and made a few small changes to conform to our mechanism. Could you, could you just give us a little bit of that info?
They were just really minor changes on titles and names and things like that. The only suggestion we really had was, um, instead of giving the senior management team until July one to develop a plan, our suggestion is to give them until September one, but still have the same January one, twenty twenty five deadline date, just a bit more time, just because it's only three weeks away.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Thank you, Mr. Pato. Mr. Sandin.
I just want to say thank you to the Envirothon team. Uh, I'm really impressed with the level of work you've done here and the research you've done and approaching it from a holistic viewpoint from the start, from the source of the materials to where it ends up. And I just have to say, it's no surprise that you won the Envirothon last year.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Barry.
Thank, thank you for this. This is wonderful. Um, a technical question for Mr. Malloy. So this policy would be on the municipal side of town government, correct? And a different policy would need to be adopted on the school side?
Yes.
Okay, and so I'm assuming you're going to be going to the school committee or have you already done that?
Um, we're planning on doing that soon, yeah.
Put the microphone on.
We're planning on doing that soon. Yeah, okay.
Ms. Hay.
So I will add my thanks, and I especially will add my thanks for the fact that this doesn't just affect water bottles because that's been one of my pet peeves every time we've had this conversation, that by taking away water bottles, we actually and only water bottles, we push people towards some of the less healthy choices by making this a universal application of plastic. It takes the, the content out of the conversation, and so I, I particularly appreciated that that was the, the view you took. Thank you.
So, Mr. Malloy, where, what should we expect as the board's next steps before we adopt any policy? We're gonna have some plans to review of how this would transition.
And so, uh, tomorrow we have a senior management team meeting, and we will be discussing it there and seeing whether or not there are any other concerns that may be raised by any of the senior management, um, staff. And then if not, we'll bring it back to the select board in the coming weeks.
Yeah, I, I would just note events. It, you know, the day to day always seems easy because it's in a routine. It's when we have an event that things seem to get more challenging. So, you know, maybe we can figure out how that can work or not work. So, Ms. Barry.
So I will say, speaking of events, and Mr. Pinzino was still in the room, at Discovery Day, MWRA was here with their big water truck, which was amazing. I used it, I don't know, six or eight times. Um, so those are things that I think you're gonna start to see more at events in the future, so that's fabulous. Um, just to clarify, is this a town manager policy or select board policy?
Mr. Malloy.
It could be either, I would think, but if the board wanted to adopt it as a policy, that would be fine. If you wanted me to adopt it as a policy, I'm fine doing that as well.
Mr. Pato, your opinion?
Uh, so my opinion is I would prefer the board to adopt it as a policy to set that larger exposure for the community to see where we're headed. It wouldn't just be subject to the town managers to decision.
Does that lines up better with our electric, re-electrification policy, which is ours, not the town manager's? So, okay. All right, so I think unless there's other comments, I'm actually, um, we will have multiple times at our table. We'll re-review this before we adopt it. So this is sort of our first pass at this, and I want to thank all of you so much for taking time out of the, your evening to, to be with us and, and, um, we really appreciate the time and energy and effort that went into this. Clearly, there was a lot of work and very well coordinated, by the way. One of the best presentations we've ever had with this many people, so, kudos. Okay, thank you all so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, colleagues, our third item on the agenda this evening is for the board to discuss the Zero Waste Survey recommendations. A few weeks ago, as you all remember, we had received a presentation from the team at Tufts University. Uh, they made several recommendations, and now the staff is seeking feedback on next steps, what's feasible, what's not feasible. And we are, again, being joined by Maggie Peard, Sustainability and Resilience Officer, as well as Dave Pinzino, our Director of Public Works. And, um, I'm gonna open it up to Ms. Peard and Mr. Pinzino.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, Maggie Peard, Sustainability and Resilience Officer. Um, and as, uh, Mr. Lusante said, a few, few weeks back, you saw the presentation from the Tufts team, um, and really what that was, was a refresher on what was in the Zero Waste Plan. So Dave and I are here tonight to hear more, more from the board about how you would like to see staff kind of direct efforts on those pieces going forward. And just before going into, into that, I wanted to highlight a few points from the background material. And Dave, please jump in when, when, if you would like. But as the select board knows, um, the price of waste is going up. We saw that with our, um, budget the past couple of years. And I think having a well thought plan of how to reduce our waste and how to pay for those services, um, are, it's not just a sustainability win, but it also will protect the town financially, um, and it's just a responsible kind of move to make. And as part of that, I think it's important when thinking about these strategies, noting that they all really work together in conjunction. So moving to com- townwide compost and expanding reuse options are necessary to be able to move towards strategies like pay as you throw or alternating week trash collection. Uh, they become feasible when there are better diversion streams available. And I just wanted to take a second to highlight a few points from particularly on pay as you throw or trash metering, because I know that's been a contentious issue in Lexington in the past. So Kim, if you don't mind pulling up the, the second, yeah, background material. This is from a presentation that Mass D E P has put together, and it really highlights just how influential and impactful pay as you throw is. Um, and if you can go to slide ten. I think we see how far we've come from the early two thousands of seeing from the Tufts survey that fifty four percent of survey participants were actually in support of a trash metering program. And just to highlight kind of the effectiveness of a program like this, you can see, uh, the color gradation here shows the amount of waste per household, and the crosshatches show where you have a pay as you throw or smart community. Smart is save money and reduce trash. Um, and you can see we're kind of right on the edge of many of our neighbors who have pay as you throw, and they are in the lighter green and, and yellow. Um, and then there's a large kind of swath of the, the northeastern part of the state that do not have pay and use pay as you throw, and that's where you see some. and that's where you see some of these dark reds and pinks and oranges. And if you go to slide twenty-three, I think this kind of does a good job of highlighting how Pay As You Throw works well in parallel with other strategies. So it shows things like food waste collection, textile, curbside pickup. All of those are kind of necessary for the success of a program like Pay As You Throw. And so that's really why all of these strategies that the Tufts team presented on and were in our Zero Waste Plan are being brought forward together, so we can think about how to have a well-thought-out strategy for all of those. And I just want to highlight two case studies. So if you go to slide thirty-two, this is a case study in Dartmouth of moving to Pay As You Throw. And you'll see they've had this program in place since two thousand and seven, and they have a similar number of households, just under twelve thousand households. And you can see that their annual trash tonnage is five thousand, whereas here in Lexington, we're in the eight thousand, nine thousand range, and a lot of that can be attributed to this sort of program. And then slide thirty-six, and just another example that you see the same sort of thing in Shrewsbury. Again, a similar-sized community, and you're seeing again that that five thousand to six thousand range. So multiple thousand tons of trash less than here in Lexington. And then just for context for your discussion, if you go to slide thirty-nine, there are a number of kind of supports and financial assistance available through Mass D E P that Lexington could consider going after. The first one here is a Technical Assistance Grant, which is eighty hours of dedicated in-kind technical assistance from Mass D E P that would allow the town to do a really in-depth engagement strategy of public meetings and and more information and education about what are the benefits of trash metering or Pay As You Throw? And really learning more about what the community wants and doesn't want in that sort of program to make sure it's well implemented if we were to bring that to Lexington. And then just the next slide down. There's also a lot of implementation support, so grants through Mass D E P that can help towns implement Pay As You Throw programs. And then the last slide, forty-one. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, here we go. Yeah. So right now, the the town most recently got twenty thousand dollars through Mass D E P R D P funds in twenty twenty-three. And this slide highlights how we would be eligible for fifty percent more funding if we had a Pay As You Throw system in place. And those are funds that can then be used to help support further waste reduction strategies. So those are just the pieces of the background materials I wanted to highlight. This, the results of the Tufts study has been brought both to the Sustainable Lexington Committee and the Waste Reduction Task Force. And I know S L C sent a letter to the board in support of the general recommendations. The kind of main comments from both of those meetings were they want to see with these actions kind of a well-thought-out phase plan of how to approach implementing some of these strategies. And one key piece to consider of kind of a short-term action item would be the fact that we have that free phrase in the the town bylaws of waste collection that became a problem implementing Pay As You Throw now a couple decades ago. So that could be a a first action item of something for the board to consider looking at to remove. So that's all I wanted to kind of highlight before the discussion. Dave, if you wanted to add anything, go ahead.
So I just had a couple of things. One of the the things with the trash collection industry, the price keeps going up for disposal. We're finding fewer companies that do manual collection. We're fortunate to get one for this current contract that we have, but we don't see that sustainable in the future, that most all of them are going to want the communities to be on an automated system. The recycling market, we're actually paying for recycling disposal now, where, you know, ten years ago, we were receiving money for that. So there's a number of things, landfills, the state is still looking at closing some additional landfill transfer stations, which will then force, you know, things to be taken out of state. And that certainly will lead to higher costs for disposal. So all of these things together, we just need to look at how we're approaching trash, recycling, food waste, all that collection in Lexington, and where does that go and how does that end up? Because those costs keep going up. The other thing we're very concerned about is the state continually is coming up with additional mandates. We had the mattress and box spring, which is now no longer considered trash. It has to be recycled. That's a cost that the the town never used to incur. And now we do. And so we have, we've had to account for that into the budget. We see other things down the road that they're going to go the same route, take those out of the trash stream, so we can no longer collect that as part of the, you know, regular trash collection. Those will have to be separate collections, and all those things add cost that we will have to find in the budget if we want to continue those pickup curbside services. So just some things to consider, and I think we need to look at this as a coordinated effort with a a number of different strategies, you know, in order to to fight that. We certainly want to reduce tonnage. Food waste is a big component. We did get the approval, the board had approved, trying to get another two thousand households onto that program. So we, that will be starting up come July. So we encourage people, if they're not registered, to go ahead and register for that. It's it's currently being offered free to the resident. But that, we have seen, has, you know, impacted the amount of trash we're bringing to the incinerator, which again reduces that cost, even though there's a cost to the collection. You know, we want to get to a point where those more offset than not. So just some things to consider, but I think it needs to be, as Maggie mentioned, a coordinated effort and different strategies that we need to look at. But if we don't start planning for these things now and incorporating them into our plan moving forward, we're just going to be hit with budget increases that we don't have control over.
Thank you, Ms. Peard, and thank you, Mr. Pinson. Just before I take comments and questions from the board, where does one, how many spots are left for the next pilot that we're doing? Or the program?
I think he has that number.
Over eleven hundred spots still remain.
Eleven hundred spots remaining, and how does someone go about getting themselves on the list?
You can go to blackearthcompost.com Lexington, and there's an enrollment form right on that website.
Thank you. This topic is obviously one that I feel is universally opinionable. Everyone has an opinion on trash because we all generate trash. I'm sure there's someone in town that doesn't, but I haven't met them yet. So, you know, I just want to approach this as these are recommendations, these are ideas. We can either choose to do none of them or all of them, or something in between. So I think what what I've heard from Mr. Mr. Pinson and Ms. Peard is which ones does our board feel like we should work toward pursuing? Doesn't mean we're starting it tomorrow, but which ones do we, are we interested in pushing forward in our upcoming, you know, year, years, as we, as none of this stuff happens overnight? Of course. But this is our opportunity to sort of give our impressions and feeling. So I will start with Mr. Mr. Sandy.
I have a question, and maybe it's a softball question for Ms. Peard or Mr. Pinson. You've got four or five recommendations. Is there a phasing of this that you think might make sense?
So I think depending on which strategies you want to pursue, there's certainly the opportunity for phasing. There's an opportunity to blend different strategies together. So it's not either all one thing or another. If you read some of the the backup materials, there are communities that you only pay if you exceed the limit. So there is no charge to the resident for trash collection. It's just if you exceed what that that limit is, then there would be a pay for that charge. So there's a number of ways to do it. And there's a number of ways to phase that in. So I think we need direction, you know, from the board and and the community in order to really start vetting some of these things, so we can bring something back to you.
Okay. So if you're looking for feedback from from the board, at least from my perspective, it seems like there's the the zero-regret strategy is curbside composting. We save money. It costs us, it diverts trash out of this. So I I feel very good about that. And to me, what the reason I was asking about phasing is it seems to me as we implement curbside composting, it enables some of these other things, makes some of these other ideas a little bit more feasible. And so I I I I had a a question, which maybe isn't such a softball question, about the automated pickup. And my question is, when our previous contractor was doing automated pickup, but we didn't have to go out and buy all new receptacles for that. And I I get a little queasy about the idea that we would have to go and buy all new receptacles for every one of the town people and the cost of that and the amount of plastic generated. Is it possible to do something like what we did previously where that they automatically pick up and we don't have to go and buy all new trash receptacles for everybody in town?
So they they weren't doing an official automated collection. The type of vehicles that they had, that company had purchased, had that capability on those vehicles. So when they saw a container that could be, you know, easily dumped into the vehicle, they they went with that option. The concern is that not a lot of those vehicles will hold up to the wear and tear of the arm grabbing it, picking it up, dumping it in, and then putting it back. And then at that point, who's replacing those? Who's keeping track? The other thing is, if you are going to look at determining an amount, you know, a gallonage that's to be collected, if you have a a number of different carts out there, that's a lot harder to to have consistency on. So, you know, if we were to go to automated, the the way to do it would be to to go ahead and purchase the carts and have that be you know, a uniform thing throughout the community.
Have the other members make some comments.
Ms. Berg, oh, Ms. Berg.
Thank you. So I agree, this is a collaborative process. I also think it's a hugely educational process. And so I want to, you know, thank Tufts for their work and for the work that you guys are doing so far. But I have a question. Where are we with the trash committee that we used to have? Does that committee still exist? Do they still meet? Are they still working out recommendations?
Yeah, so we have a, it's a Waste Reduction Task Group. So they, we met last week, and we will be continuing to meet and coming up with some recommendations. They'd already come up with some recommendations for the board. One of them was the food waste pilot. So that group will continue to be active in helping us bring some of those things forward.
Okay, so I'm a little bit confused here also on timeline. Like, are you looking for us to just give our impressions now, or are we looking at a particular timeline based on where we are in this contract? Or is this for after this contract expires, or things we can do in the middle of the contract?
So I I think the timeline would be to look at the twenty-seven budget, because there are not, we have used ARPA funding for the food waste. We will not have that available for twenty-seven. So there's going to be some decisions that are going to have to be made. You know, if that's a strategy that we want to continue for the budget, the, as far as any of the, you know, going with any kind of automated system or something like that, that's, we have, the current vendor can provide that. So that's not a they would probably need about a year to implement that. So I think we, the timeline is to look towards the twenty-seven budget and some things that we want to start moving forward or towards for that timeframe. So that's kind of what I would use for now.
So there's a little bit of a window here.
Yes.
Because the one thing that I'm really concerned about, that I haven't really heard mentioned, and I know there was this great survey done and looked like it it hit maybe ten percent of the town roughly, ten percent of the households possibly, if it was one per household, is engaging the community in this conversation.
Yes.
You know, I recall several years ago when I was chair, we were going to roll out automated collection and provide the carts, and we thought it was a slam dunk. And it was not. And boy, were we surprised.
I agree with you. So I I think we want to have some sense of some things to look at, and we've talked about that. There certainly will be community meetings, you know, public input, and, you know, we will go from there. So that is going to be part of the process.
Yeah, but where you talked a little bit about, it's kind of à la carte, no, I mean, it's a different type of card. No sleep. But anyway, is that, now bless my train of thought.
That's for à la carte.
Oh, yes, à la carte. Is that it would be helpful if that could be narrowed down more? And I don't think that narrowing down should take place at this table with just these five. So that's why I was asking about the the Waste Committee. If they could make recommendations, I think that would be a better use of this board's time. I don't know if Mr. Pato's giving me the eyes because he agrees with that or disagrees with that, but, you know, he.
Mr. Pato.
So I am a member of that task force. A lot of this material has already come to the Waste Reduction Task Force, and you heard Ms. Peard say comments backward to for the board to look at this and give a a sense of direction. So I I agree, this needs a lot more detail and explicit roadmap. But I think what the Waste Reduction Task Force is looking for is a sense of appetite for direction. Are these areas that we think we should explore and engage the public broadly on? Or do we think there are hard nos on some of this, in which case, don't waste time developing plans, just develop plans in the substantive areas? And that's that's where we are. I I'm not surprised that we're not ready to give that information, because there was a lot to absorb, and the ask wasn't quite clear. But I but I think what Mr. Pinson wants with the Waste Reduction Task Force wants is for the board to consider the social concerns in the community as to eventual direction and to give the green light to go work on these elements, so that we can then get consensus across the community.
Ms. A.
So I know that I've talked a little bit about this. The last time we talked about it, I looked up in like January, February of twenty twenty-three. But you can take the litigator out of the courtroom. You can't take the courtroom out of the litigator, something like that. So I, of course, had to go back and look at the judgment in the case when we got sued for trying this once before. And I will say that I think the first thing we need to do is determine if there is an appetite to take the the read of the community on the will to change our bylaw, which currently says that, you know, we will provide a suitable place or method for free public disposal for the inhabitants of the town to dispose of, and it goes on and on and on, and all the different things we can dispose of. Now it is under our regulations, so we entirely have the right to change whether we, you know, how we define and what we regulate. So I'm I'm not saying that, frankly, I don't even think that we we should, because I do think that the world has changed. I know I had too many negatives in there. The world has changed, and a lot of things that used to be easily disposed of are no longer, and it is costing us an increasing amount of money. So I think it is a conversation, but I think it's a much, much broader conversation, and I think it will have to go to a bylaw change. And I think we have to have that conversation with the community before we really go down the road here. And, you know, just because I'm still a geek on that, also, I will also reiterate that, you know, the the summary judgment which we received specifically said that, you know, literally, this the town cannot do in reference to charging for removal of trash. So it cannot do under our existing bylaw. So um, it cannot do under our existing bylaws. And so free in the context precludes direct charges to Lexington residents for rubbish collection. So we need to talk about that upfront. That can't be the elephant in the back of the room. That has to be the elephant in the very front center on the table. Um, so I would like to have that conversation and figure out how we take that read of the community.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. Mr. Pato.
Uh, so so that that is one of the recommendations was to um, if we wanted to go down that path, we were going to have to change the bylaw. If we're going to change the bylaw, we would need to have that uh, eh, uh, exposure in the community. Um, and the question is, do we as a board want to start that ball roll? Um, I I, it was twenty years ago. The community has changed significantly. There are fewer than half of them, the voters who were of age and eligible to vote at that time. Going about a ha- forty percent of them are still residents in Lexington. So it is something that I think we need to understand where the community is today.
And I think as importantly, the nature of trash removal has changed significantly in those twenty years as well. I think that's a really important piece of this.
Ms. Barry.
Um, I was just gonna put on the table with the elephant. Um, is it something where we educate the community and then go out to, just like a non-binding question, would they support this? Something to think about? We don't need to have an answer tonight, but that would potentially give us feedback.
Mr. Pato.
So so I think non-binding questions are something we should talk about in general because it is difficult for me to really understand what that means. Given the low voter turn turnout we have when it's a non-binding question. It's sort of a double negative as uh, in that it it's hard to understand where is the community really? But I do think we do need to engage. And in every opportunity, you know, uh, discovery days, public sessions, um, outreach through PTAs even, to get to all the aspects of the community.
So I I have some fairly strong opinions on the, on the pay as you throw it. It gives me some very deep reactions. And and something that was true for me seven years ago when we talked about this still true today. We we talk at this table about diversity, equity, inclusion. And we talk about diversity of, you know, what people can afford. Not everybody can afford everything, right? So when you start talking about pay as you throw, I immediately come back to my roots, which is a large family, right? Nine, nine children in my family. We were not producing one bag of trash a week, like maybe an elderly, single person lives alone is going to produce. So we're not all equal in what we're producing. So we're now being punitive against those that may have larger families or that may have income um, or or uh, financial hardships. It, that's one of those things that just sits with me wrong about how this is, that that concept is in eh, in stark contrast to sort of our other policies and where we're headed. With that said, we also we we pay a lot of money in taxes to live in Lexington. And, you know, so to me, this is sort of a service I think we should be providing at 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 whatever level. We're also a very smart community. And people have come along with things such as the composting, you know, we we put that out there and it's showing results, if I heard Mr. Pinsonau correctly. The, those are the strategies I'm comfortable with. I like the carrots and not the sticks. Um, so we, we need to look at what are more opportunities for carrots. With that said, I, you know, my, my immediate response to the pay as you throw is, this is not, that's not a strategy. I would say, let's start pushing for that. The composting, I I agree with Mr. Sandy, that's a kind of a no-brainer. I think it's gone well. Um, let's, let's keep pushing that. Let's, you know, see how we can get every household on it. And and the um, automated collection, I'm, I I agree, Ms. Ms. Barry said, well, we thought this was going to be a no-brainer as well, and it turned out it wasn't. Um, so we backed off of that, but I would, I would reconsider that concept again. Um, if if the right vendor was available to give us, maybe, maybe not every barrel is the same size, you know, I I have family out out in the west. And they have barrels that are, I mean, they're mammoth. I don't even know how they move them to the curb. I mean, they're just too big. So I can't imagine, you know, sort of our elderly residents in the snow trying to get their um, bins out to the sidewalk. Um, if, you know, if it's, you know, fifty gallon or whatever the, probably got the gallons wrong, but anyway, my I, those are just my sort of first reactions and, you know, what's being proposed here. We of course should look at, you know, all options all the time, right? We have a fiduciary duty to sort of see what's available. I just think the page you throw is not something that sits well with me um, personally. And I think it goes against some of our, our other desires for equity in our community. With that said, I'll take any other comments from board, and then I'll open it up to public comment. Mr. So Mr. St. Pato, and then Mr. Sandy.
So, so Sandy, I I I understand your concern about equity, and I I share it. Um, but one of the things we do know is that um, metered disposal actually does reduce the generation of trash in households. Um, so maybe this needs to be coupled with looking at some form of financial assistance for family size. Um, so that there are ways of, and I don't know that there are policies, but it's, it's there is a theory that says when you are looking at your own, spending your own money out of your wallet, you pay much more attention to the actions you take. And that has borne fruit in many communities in the state.
I I would love a deeper analysis on that for, you know, wh- where does the waste go? Right? If I have, I rarely have an opportunity to say, I'm going to just keep this waste in my house for a little longer, and I'll get rid of it later. So it's is it being, is it because things are getting diverted to recycling, which we've now heard from Mr. Pinsonau's costing more money than it had when we used to get paid for it? Or is it going into a business dumpster? You know, where they say, oh, um, I don't want to pay to throw, so I'm going to throw it at um, the commercial property down the street that has dumpsters. So it has to go somewhere. That's, that's sort of the part. It's, it, the behavior is only so much that where does it, where does it end up? And I'm not sure anyone's told me that answer over the years, but that would be interesting to find out. Mr. Sandy.
So, um, I'm reflecting on Ms. Barry's comments about education and this no-brainer idea of of curbized curbside composting and the fact that we have a service that's available, but not everybody's taking. So it seems to me there's some education sort of things of how do we sort of move that forward so that more and more people are doing that? And if they're doing that effectively, goes back to my phasing question earlier. To me, it seems like if we're being effective at that, then we might be able to start looking if people are putting their organic matter, their smelly matter into the curbside composting. And that maybe if we get enough people on that path, we may be able to start doing alternate week trash collection. And that, I think, may have some significant benefits, uh, both from an economic perspective as well as from uh, uh, trash reduction perspective. Because it would encourage more people to put more of their organic material into their composting. So Mr. Pinsonau seems to.
Yeah, so eh, so just as I mentioned before, there's a number of different strategies to look at. They can kind of work in combination. So I don't think, y- you know, eh, you don't have to look at just one avenue. This is this is all we're going to do. Um, there are a number of different things that can be, can, that can work together um, in order to address those issues of the the trash, the cost, those things uh, to look at. So just to keep that in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Pinsonau. I'm going to uh, open it up now to public comment. Uh, if anyone has a public comment, if you could please come up to the microphone in the room or online, if you could press the raise hand button in Zoom. And we'll start with in the room. If you could identify your name, address, and any relevant boards or committee affiliations, and you're limited to two minutes.
Two minutes? Come on. All right, I'll try to do it in two. By the way, happy birthday, Joe. It is your birthday? Uh, I thought we outlawed helium in Lexington. We haven't done that yet?
So take some of your time.
No, no, I'm off, I'm on.
Uh, I want to thank Ms. Prizio for having uh, surprised me with cupcakes and the balloon here was my birthday yesterday. Uh, technically, this is the bottle of wine birthday, for those of you who remember that.
If we'd know.
And I'll reset the timer.
Uh, the name's Peter Kelly. I live at twenty-four Forest Street. And I've got to say, pay as you throw was a bad idea. It costs more time, more money, and a tremendous amount of aggravation, not just for the citizens. And that's what we're here for, to satisfy and serve the citizens. Everybody has trashed to get rid of. Just because you want to charge them doesn't going to mean it's going to not be trash anymore. If there are things that are worth looking at in this community to improve our recycling, which, by the way, I looked online last night, and we divert sixty percent of our waste in this state, town, which is probably one of the highest uh, rated communities. And we don't have pay as you throw. We're getting a good job done by our citizens. Capital, which is our present trash collector, has done a wonderful job. Single, simple truck goes around. It doesn't have all these arms and things that have been done by Harvey. But um, it it's working smoothly and well, and it's, it's costly, I mean, but everything's more costly now. If we want to do something, we should focus on going back to dual streaming. One of the real problems in recycling is that we've contaminated all the material. We were making money, as has been mentioned years ago, to uh, if we, when we had dual streaming, we kept the paper and the cardboard separate. It was clean. It had a market. We were making money. It was also not contaminating the metal and the glass, which had a value at that time. Now we just have a mash of stuff that nobody wants. We made a terrible mistake. It's not that we can't go back and correct it. Last thing I'll say with whatever seconds I have is I got a real problem with Lexington talking so strongly about zero waste and all that. And I'm seeing come, coming down the avenue, a multi-hundred-million-dollar school project that is suggesting we should trash uh, recreational facilities here in town, spend millions to do that, then spend millions again to rebuild them somewhere else on the other side of perhaps a new school. A new school that's almost five hundred thousand.
You could wrap up.
Oh, okay. Watch your, uh, watch that thing come down the road. And don't let us waste valuable things on that school project.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Is that two minutes?
It was two minutes and fifteen seconds. And I, online, I have um, Lynn Jensen with the hand up. If you could identify your name and address. Um, any real, relevant boards or committees, and you have two minutes.
Oh, hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hi, uh, my name is Lynn Jensen. I'm a town meeting member for Precinct Eight, um, member of the Sustainable Lexington Committee. Um, and uh, a resident on one hundred thirty-three East Street. Um, I would like to ask uh, Ms. Peer to maybe later read the statement from Sustainable Lexington Committee uh, for the um, survey by the Tufts. I think we work very uh, well, uh, to to make that statement, uh, why we supporting the survey results. And I just have three points. Hopefully, I'll be finished in two minutes. Uh, one is that uh, pay uh, as you throw, I think it's a a good idea, and for large families that Mr. Lucenti mentioned, we can give uh, uh, exemptions for family size of certain size and more than three or four uh, children or whatever. I think those are exemptions that can ea- easily be made. And uh, by the way, when you have nine children, you pay food for nine children, and you pay water for nine children, you pay clothing for nine children. You don't go to a store saying, I want to buy this fixed amount of food, eh, you know. I think it's just a resource that we have to pay for for it. We cannot just say we all just get for free, you know, for one size, face all. And secondly, I want to uh, answer Mr. Lucenti's question that when you have the pace as you throw, oh, the waste reduced, uh, how, where does the waste go? I help out a student to sort their trash every day during lunchtime. I was surprised every day that it's effort for a student to sort. If you don't have in financial incentives, they rather just close their eyes for everything in one bin. So that's time and effort. So uh, when we have pay as you throw, the families would spend more time sort their trash, compost their food waste, resell and share, donate items that can be uh, sold and used by other families.
You could finish up your times.
Yeah, one last point is that uh, one last point is, thank you, sorry. One last point is that uh, we have the Zero Waste Resolution, we have the Zero Waste Plan, and then we have this survey. And I think time is running up, uh, as Mr. Pinsonau said, the uh, pumps are out of, no more space.
Your time is up. Thank you so much. Okay, in the room? If you could state your name and address for the record, any relevant boards and committee affiliations, you have two minutes.
Don McKenna, nine Hancock Street. Um, and I too have a lot of angst about pay as you throw. I actually sat on the board when that was implemented. It was not a good time for this town. And I thought Peter was going to go down a different path related to the school project. If you want to find how to take the anger that's behind a lot of efforts in this town and dump it into the high school, no. Vote. Then start talking about pay as you throw and implementing. I say it's a hard no right now. It's not something we should be looking at. I can tell you chapter and verse what happened at that time. And one of the things to answer Mr. uh, Lucente's question is a lot of the trash ended up in municipal barrels. And I can tell you that on Martha's Vineyard, they have pay as you throw. And that's what happens. It goes into municipal barrels. It does go into some company ones, but they tend to lock their barrels. Um, so I also think every other week is a bad strategy. We actually brought in every week um, for that reason. But I do think there's a lot that can be done from an educational standpoint. And I learned more through the pay as you throw, not because we implemented it, be, but because all the people who are willing and understand it, including our sustainability officer, came out and said, here's somebody's trash, and they started pulling things out and saying, this can go in recycling, this can go in your barrel. So that kind of education, the composting and all other things. Um, and then the only other thing that I, that I want to say um, is that I wonder about the makeup of the committee that's talking about all these efforts, because I think we all have a tendency to get involved with things that we really support. And I know there's been lots of great efforts on the sustainability, and you've brought me as a reluctant person forward to do it. But I think you need to have some people more that don't share the everything sustainable on your committee, so that you can.
Time is up. You could finish your sentence.
Yep. So if, if you can, and bring people like that on, and we can help you get to the things that will have a quick payoff and start to build some positive towards that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, last, we have online Laura Swain. If you could state your name and address for the record. And please, um, any relevant boards or committee affiliations, and you have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Laura Swain. Uh, I'm a town meeting member and board president of Lexington Zero Waste Collaborative, and also a former employee of the Department of Environmental Protection. I just retired last week uh, in their uh, office of general counsel, but working on solid waste issues. So a a couple of things. I think uh, Lexington Zero Waste Collaborative really supports um, um, expanding the curbside composting program. Um, and then with that, also uh, switching to a pay as you throw program. I think that having a pay as you throw program and making more visible options such as donating items, um, sending your textiles, um, mattress recycling, all those things help to reduce the trash. And then over time, there will be more options such as the reusable containers we have at Royal India Bistro, and people won't be generating items that they put in their recycling bin but actually are not recyclable. Um, and so that will reduce the amount of trash that's generated. One of the reasons why I personally really support a pay as you throw program is because I actually think it is very equitable. There is a charge, but there's also a charge for trash pickup. It's just included in our taxes. So, and that means we're not getting something else. When it's included in our taxes, a small family, low income or not, is paying for the trash disposal of a very large is paying for the trash disposal of a very large family, low income or not. And also, a low income family who may be having decreased, making fewer purchases, is paying for the disposal of all the items that somebody has delivered to their house on a daily basis. So I think it is a rather equitable process.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. Appreciate your comments. And last comment I'll take is online Ricky Papo. If you could state your name and address, any relevant boards and committees, and you're limited to two minutes.
Ricky Papo, 16 Blossom Crest Road. I'm a town meeting member and I'm Chair of Lexcan. I just want to say, I've lived in Lexington for many, many years. I, I, I not only survived pay as you throw, I thrived during pay as you throw. And I, I, I feel that I, I understand there's a lot of negative feelings in that. We didn't, didn't change the bylaw previously, but there was an appetite for it because it passed at that time. And I, I saw a very visible change in the trash of people in my neighborhood. More people were recycling, more people were throwing out less. I do think you make different decisions when you know you have to throw things away. I, I agree that education needs to happen. We need to educate people on all their different options on what to do with some of their trash. This community reuses unbelievable amounts of items if you ever go on Facebook or reuse it. So I, I think there is an appetite in the town. A lot has changed. We have a lot more options. Pay as you throw was, was only difficult because we did not change the bylaw. It was not a difficult process. And I visibly saw, not only did the amount of trash that went out at that time go down, it has changed forever. It changed people's habits, and that's really what we're talking about here. A lot of habits just need to be changed. And this was, this was one way to do it for waste. So I, I really hope that the town reconsideres changing the bylaw, putting in a pay as you throw. And every other week, I think we have all of the backup materials and research to prove that this can and should be done and is being done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Papo. Okay, colleagues. And I want to thank everyone who spoke on this topic. This will not be our last time talking about this clearly.
You're going to have a talking trash.
We should do that. So we, this will be on a future agenda. And I, I don't think I'm hearing any huge consensus much, you know, Mr. Pinson or Ms. Peard were probably looking for A, B, and C, which one do we want? I'm not hearing that. I am hearing more community feedback and more discussion and more listening and more educating before we're ready to make any strong moves. I did hear some consistent themes about composting. I don't think anyone in our, at our table thinks that's a bad idea. So I definitely, I see that as a direction forward. The others, I'm not hearing any consistent feedback from the board. So this will come back. Mr. Pinson?
Yeah, I, I think that we've heard enough to bring back to the, the group and certainly education and things like that. So, you know, Ms. Peard and I can have that discussion. And I, I think there's some things that we can go ahead and work on.
Well, I'm glad to hear you heard something which is positive. And again, thank you both for your time and the folks on the Tufts team for the work they put into this. This again will not be our last conversation. Speaking of not our last conversation, we're only at our fourth item on the agenda. I'm going to ask that we take a brief five-minute recess and we will come back refreshed and ready to move on. Thank you.
Only if we had that wine. Will you be bringing me a bottle of wine?
Okay, colleagues, we're going to come back to order. Thank you again for your time. And we're going to move on to our fourth item on the agenda this evening, which is for the board to receive a presentation on the internal equity audit by Tangible Development. We're being joined by Dr. Grebecker of Tangible Development. And Ms. Kelly Axtell, our deputy town manager, will be introducing Dr. Becker and will help present on this item. If I could ask the audience to not talk, just so it doesn't get picked up by the microphones. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucente. Dr. Becker is our lead strategist and consultant from Tangible Developments. She has led, we've had focus groups, we've had surveys with the all of town staff that has been involved. She's presented to the senior management team twice and done some other trainings with the rest of the staff as well. Just very quickly, the internal side of the town of Lexington, the staff here wanted to get a, needed to get a sense of where we were around diversity, equity, inclusion for our staff. And so we engaged with tangible development to do a whole assessment on ranging from cultural asks to leadership opportunities within the staff and how people felt about those opportunities. So she's done, her team has done a great job so far. So we wanted to give a, a high level overview to the board so that you are aware of what we're doing for work on the internal side in relation to the DEI goals we have for the town. Dr. Becker?
Thank you very much. So if everything goes according to plan, I'm about to share my screen with y'all. It looks right on my side. Does it look right on y'all's side?
You see it. Thank you.
Excellent. That's what I always want to hear. All right. So this is the sort of high level findings for the DEI assessment. Again, like I said, this is internal to the town as a workplace, not external to the town as a broader community. So when you're thinking about this, right, that's what the questions we asked were about. I've been working on this primarily with Molly, who can't be here tonight. So, just a little fussy. So what did we mean to do? So what were our major goals? We were looking to understand the organizational structure and workflow of the town of Lexington as an organization, right, as a workplace, understanding the current state of DEI, places where there's strengths and gaps, threats and needs, identifying what might be preventing the town of Lexington from being a fully inclusive organization, and really understanding the experiences of Town of Lexington employees. The goal is to develop a culture of belonging and inclusion that allows everyone to thrive, really getting a sense of what that experience, the sort of spectrum of that experience is like. So what did we do? Kelly alluded to a lot of this. Some of this was with my colleagues. So if you're looking at me and thinking, I met someone who looked nothing like you, you met either Tiff Richards or Kabir Amari, the two colleagues who worked with me on this project. So if you met somebody in a workshop or in the flesh, it might not have been me. Very well might have been one of my colleagues. So we did some work with the leadership team in the beginning. So that now feels like a long time ago, as we started things out and Tiff was there in person in the fall. We did project management, so some of that's meetings, but also the analysis and the writing that goes into this report, that you're going to see some of the highlight results of. We did a policy and practice review, so it's like a fine tooth combing of your written documents for internal facing policy. Focus groups and some one-on-one interviews as well. The DEI CAT, which is a climate survey. We did some workshops for employees with my colleague Kabir Amari. And then there's been ongoing communication support for the project, especially as we were getting folks ready to participate in stuff and encouraging folks to sign up. So what did we have for data? For the survey, 155 folks responded. That's a 41% response rate, so a little under half of the organization. We're asking folks about how they perceive their organizational structure and culture. The policy and practice review writes the documents, 38 submitted, 31 of them sent back with feedback. Inevitably, you get some documents where there's just nothing DEI to offer you back about them. So I read all 38, but 31 with back. Looking for really places where there's opportunities to enhance, fill in gaps, make shifts. And then focus groups and other qualitative data, 10 facilitated focus groups, as well as five one-on-one interviews with a total of 80 participants across those. And here, we're really trying to dig in, right? We get perceptions from the survey and experience from the focus groups that start to flesh out that picture. We particularly look for folks from historically marginalized backgrounds, but also that data comes from a wide cross-section of folks with different identities. So what do we ask folks about? Sort of three big buckets that look like life course overs. We ask them about organizational structure and process and culture. In the long version of this that I presented to senior leadership, I went through these one by one with data. You're going to get a mini version that won't feel like that today. But some of the things that come feeding into this, when we're looking at structure, we're looking at who's responsible for DEI, we're looking at decision-making and communication. We're looking for compositional diversity, which is usually just like when someone says diversity, what they mean, right? Like who's there? And we look at the steepness of that hierarchy, right? How's the organization set up? When we're looking at processes, we're looking at recruitment and hiring, how people get there, retention, promotion, evaluation, how people experience being and staying there, and the processes for a culture of accountability. And then for the culture itself, we're looking at people's feelings of inclusion, both overall and specifically for folks from historically marginalized backgrounds and communities. We're looking for inclusive leadership. And we're looking for folks' team dynamics and their connections to their colleagues, right? So in some ways, a proxy for their sense of belonging. So what did we find? This is not everything, just some bits. So I'm bringing you six major themes that come out of like the data altogether. And then I'm going to bring you some numbers and a few other things. So the first thing that came out of this is performative DEI. Employees perceive a lot of what's happening in terms of diversity, equity, and inclusion work to be more about intention than about action. So there's lots of words, less doing. And so folks, this is someplace where organizations, it can result both for leadership and for employees in doing less personal or organizational or self-reflection than we'd like. And this is a pretty common bridge to need to cross for organizations, right? They, folks start with, and you'll see this in people's perception of themselves, and people's perception of the organization, right? Their, the, the, the thought part of it, the speech part of it comes often before the action part of it. And so getting that to move in sync is one of the like big steps forward for most organizations. We saw connections and communications come out as a major theme, something that employees want more of. They want to be more connected to one another, and they're looking for more communication inside the organization as a workplace. This is a place for the organization and for employees to improve construction communication skills, both for decision-making and for folks communicating with each other, right? So different kinds of communication and transparency that folks are identifying. And they also talked about, and you can see here, right, both connections and communication, but also buried in here is, is, is the organizational structure, all right? They experience it very siloed by department, totally normal for municipality. The different departments do wildly different things. But it does mean folks are having pretty different work experiences in a series of micro climates organizationally. And folks, while they feel connected and supported to by their immediate colleagues, the folks they see most often, they're looking to strengthen and build relationships outside of those, so to build connections across those silos. So then we ran to institutional and systemic barriers. That was sort of like a pun, but it wasn't meant to be, but now it is. So the barriers that folks identified were often organizational or institutional or systemic things rather than individual barriers within themselves, right? This is where they, they felt like the, the system was in their way. They see themselves, and you'll see this in the numbers in a second, as ahead of where the organization is. And that's pretty typical for organizations across kinds of organizations and locations. Books do experience, interestingly, like they don't see themselves as a barrier, but folks do see their colleagues' lack of DI awareness as a barrier to progress. So, right, different assessment for themselves and for others. But I think in some ways that leads us to this piece, right? Employees want increased DI cohesion, more organization-wide DI training and skills so that folks are brought to, to sort of a clearer level together. And we also hear folks talking about a need to improve hiring and recruitment processes for structure, for consistency, for transparency, particularly in hiring practices. And then see folks start to talk about culture shift and resistance to change. So folks are looking for culture shift towards accountability, support and trust, and away from fear, and a lack of trust. They described an organizational culture that is lacking, short on trust, or has a culture of fear, not sure if the organization will support them if or when they need it. And also sort of harkening back to that first theme, not sure if intentions are going to come to fruition as actions. And then the last two. We see leadership come out. Folks are wanting to see more formal DI work being led by their formal leadership. They want to see leadership at the helm, at the front of the charge, more engagement, more cohesion. They really want to see leadership lead and aren't necessarily seeing the robust support they're hoping to see from leadership, something folks saw as necessary for success in this area. And then finally, there's a real range of experiences and experiences of employees with marginalized identities. They're having a different experience than their peers with majoritized identities. They're doing, on average, more emotional and psychological labor, or something that's largely unrecognized. I feel like there's a lack of awareness about them and their identities and experiences, and a lack of representation in leadership, which reinforces the standing organizational climate or culture of historically centered professional or comogeneity or conformity in what is actually a rapidly diversifying both town and workplace. So I'm trying not to take more time than I was allotted. Bear with me. So climate survey, I know it's like past some people's bed. The climate survey, I'm going to bring you just a couple of number pieces. We do this with the Seattle College Research Institute, who are a sort of trusted clearinghouse for all kinds of pulling things. You may have heard them on like, I don't, I think I hear them most often quoted on NPR, but they do that kind of pulling as well. We use them as an honest broker, right, a third party. We asked folks, a big part of the DEI assessment. Well, we're asking folks about the climate, our positive and negative indicators. We asked folks good things, right, things we want them to say, yes, this is totally happening at my workplace of Town of Lexington, and things we're hoping folks say, no, no, I do not think this is ever happening at my workplace, like no way. And most things are somewhere in the middle. But what I want to draw your attention to is the bottom scaling. For, you won't see this in this, in this presentation, but if you want to dig into this at some point, we flipped this around. So if you're ever looking for numbers after this point, for good things and for bad things, you want to aim for 100. For a good thing, 100 means that thing is totally happening all the time, everywhere. And for a bad thing, that means, 100 means this never happens, unheard of, couldn't be. You don't see a lot of hundreds. What I particularly want to draw your attention to, because it'll matter one slide from now, is what a 66 means, right? These aren't school grades. The 66 is not like a D or about to be a D, right? This is a scale. And so a 66 suggests that whatever the question, the answer to it is that that's somewhat accurate, right? What is the thing? The thing is somewhat accurate. So here's your score from the overall DEI CAT coming in at a 66. So if the question is, is the town of Lexington a fully inclusive workplace? You've got a 66, right? The answer is that's somewhat accurate. And that's about what we would expect for an organization where you all are at, right? A higher score, much higher than that, would suggest that you guys are much farther along than, than anyone suspected. A score much lower than that might suggest you had more work to do than you expected. Not a huge difference between the two ways, the two kinds of things we measure until we start to parse them out. We look at the personal, so questions we ask folks about themselves as workers in the workplace, and questions we ask folks institutional about the organization itself. On each side, we're asking about thoughts and about actions. For the people, beliefs are their thoughts, practices are their actions. For the institution, culture is their thoughts, structure is their actions. You can see that in keeping with the way people experience everything, that the thoughts, right, the intentions, the words are ahead of where the actions are. That's true on the personal level, where there's a sizable gap. That is true on the organizational level, where there's a gap. And you can see the gap between the personal and the institutional, right? People see themselves as slightly ahead of the institution, but people especially see their personal beliefs as ahead of any, like where anything else is. And this is the most common breakdown, right, like relationship between scores, is to see personal beliefs at the top, institutional structure at the bottom. The other numbers that come out of this are the tolerance thermometer. The other numbers that come out of this are the tolerance thermometer. We ask folks this question, right? Does you think about the working environment? How inclusive is for the following groups of people? I did not bring you numbers here because that's not really the thing that matters. They're available if you want them. That's, they're not a secret. But really, this is the spectrum of inclusivity for this cross-factor of, of folks. You can see that people experience the workplace as most inclusive for men, for white folks, for people of high socioeconomic status and least inclusive for folks who are US citizens, for people of low socioeconomic status, transgender folks, people with disabilities, English as a learned language. And then you can see that sort of middle section of folks who are having a more mixed experience. The goal is to get everybody towards the green, not scooch everybody towards the red. But this is a good sense of who might be feeling like they have a real place and a strong sense of belonging and who might not as an employee. So we chart folks on our diversity, inclusion, maturity model. This is, right, so I show folks this at the, the very front end sometimes. And what we usually say is organizations almost always think they're all the way at the disruptive end of things, right? They're like turning the world on its head. And often the turn the world on its head organizations are like earlier in development even than, than, than they would ever like to admit, right? They're just becoming awareness because in some ways to think you're being disruptive if you're not doing something wildly edgy probably is a kind of lack of awareness. We find you exactly where we expect you to, to find you, right? You are just beginning this as a kind of formal work. You've just institutionalized a formal position in the last few years. You're just starting this first kind of, you know, large-scale assessment, solidly compliant. This isn't a legal assessment, right? This is in terms of like where you are in DEI work. And I think really well positioned to move yourself into doing strategic work very shortly. So I have a few recommendations and then I got sort of a what's in the future. So here, here's, there's, this is just some highlights for recommendations, not all of them. So suggesting in a structured sense that develop a DEI commitment and vision, like statement or language, something that sort of gives you a a sort of touchstone for how you develop your DEI work. And then drafting I strategy, DI strategic goals towards a DI strategic plan based on these findings and that commitment statement. Making sure that the chief equity officer has some real power and a viable budget, decision-making authority, resources. Under-resourcing that kind of role can often, right, stymie this kind of work. Working towards a more diverse leadership and aiming to hire a workforce that's reflective of the population you serve. Thinking about process, right? So thinking about ways to enhance existing recruitment strategy to diversify. Can they pull, seeing about tracking those demographics over time? Thinking about internal pipeline programs and, and in sort of community-based pipeline programs for women, for BIPOC folks, supporting professional advancement into leadership. And developing processes that mitigate biases and hiring a, a piece where there were some gaps in process. And then culture. Thinking about particularly using the feedback from focus groups for marginalized groups and using that to guide changes. Working to increase employees' trust. That's partially by exploring how to build a culture of accountability and support. And ensuring that senior leadership is all committed to supporting and engaged in the town's DI work. It's clearly something folks are looking for to sort of set the tone. And then this has a much longer version of it, but enhancing required and optional training. Thinking about the wide range of less included groups and thinking about this as knowledge and skills for all employees with an emphasis on, but certainly not only on that. So next up, in the fall and winter, as after Hamali returns, we'll be doing some visioning and strategic planning with the leadership team. And then with whatever I have left, I would bring to you both, open it up for a general Q and A. And also to sort of note here that the select board, which I know you all have not been like deeply engaged with this, nor did I expect you to be. But sort of thinking about what kind of leadership role the select board might have in this work. And what kind of role you might want to have as you sort of sync up with this. And what could the select board begin work on right away? And one of the things that was raised to me, and I, it's like, I've been here for a while tonight, enjoying a return to my New England roots. And I grew up in Maine and one of the things I noticed, right, is that you're using for the most part, binary gendered formal address titles. So thinking about what kind of small changes can happen as the select board also thinks about what kind of leadership role they'll take. So want to open this up for discussion and also for folks to, if they have any questions for me. I'm going to unshare, but if you want to see another slide again, I'm happy to pop it back up for you.
Thank you, Dr. Ms. X. Tell.
Thank you. I just wanted to, thank you, Dr. Becker. We appreciate you coming today. And I wanted to let the select board know. So the, the visionary, she, she briefly mentioned it. These, the leadership team is comprised of the senior management team. We really, we made it a solid decision around having the leadership team that's going to come up, sort of work with the tangible development when Hamali gets back around DEI vision and from the recommendations, putting in actionable items. And, you know, working alongside with the board with what we're doing. But we, you know, we're not expecting the board to participate in that particular part because again, it's staff-driven. But just so there's clarity around that and we're looking at what we can do right now while, again, while Hamali is out. I'm having her baby. We're not just going to let the work stop. We have a whole report that we're working on as a, as a leadership team, senior management team that will fill that gap.
Thank you for that. Colleagues, questions or comments? On the presentation? Anyways, Mr. Sandin.
So thank you for doing that work and presentation. As to the presentation, that particular slides we saw were not in the packet. So I was wondering if we could get a copy of that sent to the board and for our record. Thought it was an excellent presentation. You're, you make a number of different recommendations. I'm kind of interested in understanding what you're thinking about in terms of timing and how that would, how those recommendations would move forward.
Excellent question. So Kelly, I'll send you my slides. Can you, we, you sort out where they should go after that? Does that work?
Yes.
Excellent. To answer your other question, I don't have an exact answer for that. So some of the things that have been recommended in the report that the management team, the senior management team received are things that could just be addressed sort of like right away, like in the next few months, because they aren't things that I think need like committee work or approval, right? Some of them are just like shifting language and documents, some of which I, some of which I'm sure you have to vote on, so which I'm sure you don't. But I think a lot of this is going to be sketched out in the fall and the winter as we work together to do that DEI strategic planning with the senior management team to set this off, out usually across a three to four-year-ish plan. Graduated with like things that can be accomplished quickly and things that are going to need to be, take several years and things that we know actually might be even farther out than that. And so we're queuing up the things like that will be needed to then springboard off of for the next round of stuff. So there's not an exact timeline, but there is, the next plan is basically how, sort of setting out what the next few years will look like.
So the follow-up for me was you had mentioned in your slides, I didn't see this in the packet, but in the slides, that you were recommending a meaningful budget and authority and delegated responsibility. And I was just wondering what sort of thoughts you had along that lines and what's a meaningful budget? And what's a reasonable thing for delegated authority? What kind of delegated authority are you thinking about?
That's a fair question, but I don't have a, like a, it's not the same organization to organization. And that's something that I actually, I was like, isn't a thing that I would sort of tell you what the right number is. The question is really, what is, what does someone need to be effective in a role like that? So, and that looks different at different organizations. So part of the question is, what do other people at that level have to get their jobs done? What are the expectations and how do they interact with what kind of budget is available? More than anything, it's about not sort of isolating that role without any funding or support, which I think is sometimes, this is not specific to you all, but is a frequent pattern where they don't get, where folks need more resources than they're getting to make the role succeed. And it's sort of seen as DEI didn't work out when there was sort of a need for more there. And I think that's in some ways the nature also of a newer position, right? Is figure out what is needed there. And I, I'm hesitant to make, I was like, I think this succeeds sort of at the end of my knowledge. And I would want to have Hamali in that conversation about what's really needed, who I think probably has the firmest grasp on what would make her more effective than I do at this point. Because that's a very specific kind of question.
Ms. X. Tell.
Yes, and just to follow up, that's what we're actively doing right now is taking the time to research other communities and what tools Hamali actually needs to do the job. One of the, this was a big, a big part of the, the assessment of where we are and where, what do we need to do to start moving towards those goals? So we're at the very beginning of that, but that's a big piece that we're working on. You know, this year, Mr. Malley separated out in the town manager's budget, the equity line item. So that will help us determine, that help us build what we're spending on DEI initiatives and that sort of thing. So that, that's one piece of it. But there's many other pieces that we're exploring.
Colleagues, any further comments or questions? Okay. I want to thank you so much again for the presentation. I know this is sort of the beginning. We're at the early stages and we're excited for what's to come next. So thank you so much, Dr. Becker.
Thank you.
Okay. Colleagues, we're going to move on to our fifth item on the agenda, which is for the board to consider the Council on Aging's request for authorizations to designate Lexington as an ARPA age-friendly community. Sorry, did I say ARPA? Can you tell? I've been seeing those, those numbers or those letters too frequently. AARP, age-friendly community. We're being joined by Dana Pickelman, Director of Human Services, and Julie Shapiro, one of the co-chair, right, of the Council on Aging.
So just to give a little backstory, this is a continuation of what we've been doing, but just to give some history and some context as to why we're here. Between December 2018 and November 2019, an age-friendly community needs assessment was conducted. And that was done by UMass Center for the Social and Demographic Research on Aging Gerontology Institute. The study focused on the needs of older adults in Lexington in relation to six domains. Housing, transportation, social participation, respect and social inclusion, communication and information and community support and health services. As a result of that study, the COA formed a working group to determine what initiatives the COA and the human services would undertake in response to that. So that developed the age-friendly working group. From that group, they developed initiatives and support with the select board. The senior parking program is an example. They've also developed the senior resource guide, which emphasizes. Sorry.
Keep going.
Emphasizes on home, snow and yard maintenance. The COA has also been conducting meet and greets to meet different members in the community. So they're going to different senior housing facilities and senior living facilities. So now kind of a continuation of what we've been doing is to join the network of AARP and become an age-friendly community. So this is kind of an update on, on what that is. So we formed a working group with specific goals, which is another step in the process. So we're not seeking to form a new community, a new committee. It's really just a continuation. So what it looks like as far as next steps is taking our working group and adding different community members as sort of in, like an advisory council, where we'll go over goals and action items and next steps. And then from there, based on these domains that we're going to be working on, have again, a more formal committee that would be working on these different goals to continue our age-friendly and becoming, again, we're already doing a lot of the work, having this designation from AARP. It, it makes us feel good. It's a nice designation. It's bragging rights, but it also helps when we want to apply for grants. And so that's, it's a good thing.
Hey, did you want to add anything, Julie?
I don't really need, oh, sorry. I don't really need to add anything unless you have some questions.
Thank you so much for the presentation. And I was surprised when I saw the, the link to the, all the communities that do have it in Massachusetts and we're not on the list. It's a little shocking. Questions or comments from my colleagues? Ms. Hay.
So Ms. Shapiro and I attended, what, six years ago? Something that was sponsored by Magic on this. And at the time said, gee, how come we're not on that list? So I'm delighted that we have gotten to this stage now. So thank you for pursuing it. And thank you to both of you for the work that's gone into this.
All right. Any comments or questions from members of the audience? Not seeing anything from the board? Okay. I'm going to make a motion that we support the application for Lexington to be designated, to be designated as an age-friendly community by AARP. Is there a second?
Second.
We've done second by a row, oh, sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I'm on aye as well. Any opposed? Seeing none, it is unanimous five to zero. And
Thank you.
All right, next item. Don't throw bar. Our sixth item on the agenda is, is for the board to review recommended amendments to the draft Council on Aging charge. We're being joined by the John Zhao and Julianne Shapiro, both co-chairs of COA. Make the presentation and Sue Rockwell, who is a member of COA as well. And I don't know if Michelle Kelleher is on the line. I did have her listed.
I don't think she is.
Okay, excellent. Feel free to go, go ahead.
Okay, so I can be pretty brief. Basically, we wanted to, we've wanted to update the charge for quite some time. It's, well, the most obvious way that it's outdated is that it refers to a senior center that we no longer have. But it's also just been something that we believe is outdated in other ways. It absolutely talks about programs and activities, but we do more than that. We advocate for seniors. We strive to be a more age-friendly community, making sure that seniors, I should say, older adults' needs are met in town as they relate to other committees and boards and other things in town that are going on. So it seemed like it was time for us to update the charge to reflect all that we do. So we asked Sue and another member of our board to take that on. And we wordsmithed it and gone through the process and changed the charge to more reflect what we do.
Great. Lots of changes here. And I just want to point out to the board that this has to go to town meetings. So this is why we're, we're doing it.
So as their lead is on, and I think my colleagues here, I think we all have the same question. Why does this have to go to town meeting?
Right. I'll defer Ms. X. Tell who said that.
So the way that the charge, the charge is not on file. And so so therefore it, it's not recorded in a way that the board can make the changes. It has to go through town meeting vote. We looked it up through the select board office and the way that it's written in through town council, it has to go through a town meeting vote to make these changes.
So I'll just say that makes no sense to me because ZDA is also in our bylaws and tourism and a few other committees, and we've never taken any of their changes to town meeting. So this is something new from town council? I'm, I'm confused. Ms. Rockwell and I were talking this afternoon and we couldn't figure this one out.
I apologize. I lost the email. Let me pull it up.
Are there any other questions other than the town meeting piece of this, Ms. Hay?
I was just going to say, so I, I agree with all of the changes. The one thing is that whether it's town meeting or even if it's just the town board, the, the select board, I take the date and time of the meeting off of the charge because that can change anytime based on who your membership is. And I don't think you need to go through a process of official amending. And right now it's on there still. So I would just take that out of the charge.
That's a good point.
Mr. Sandy. Oh, Mr. Pat, I'm sorry.
So I was going to say, I also agree with the, the substance of the changes here. It's
It's, you know, the, the bylaw committee is, the bylaw element is really terse. It just says that there is a Council on Aging and it's appointed by the town manager. Right? And then the rest of it, you know, we're waiting to hear.
I apologize. It was, it's because it's part of the bylaw. That's why I asked to go to town meeting. The other one, so tourism, tree committee, it's part of the bylaw. Therefore, it has to go through town meeting, not just through the board. It was.
Let me make a recommendation that, you know, it is nine forty-seven. I don't want to have a debate on this floor about the method. I think what we're trying to get through tonight is the substance of, we're seeing these changes for the first time, Council on Aging, if we can get through the substance of that and then we can revisit the execution of that at a later point. I'd just rather, I'd rather get an opinion from town council that we can all see and hear rather than speculating at this point. Mr. Sandy.
So I, I support the changes that you have here. I think they're reasonable and well thought out. The only comment I had was in the responsibilities and duties section, it says responsibilities and duty of the COA board. Then it says the COA board later. Don't think it's actually a board. I think it's just the COA. And so in both places, seems to me that we're looking at just a one word change. If I'm understanding the formation of the Council on Aging properly.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. And the only comment I'll make is on the criteria for membership. With the change of taking out elder and replacing with older adult, it just reads funny to say that just the way the sentence reads is, it just trips me up a little. So I'd rather it say, you know, it's open to individuals who are actively engaged and interested in the wellbeing and issues of older adults, rather than saying older adult affairs. It just sounded odd. And elder affairs is a term we've all used for years, but it's sort of means something. So.
We, we, I will say that we struggle with the terminology even now. Be, and, and if you ask 10 different people, you'll get 10 different opinions and rationales. There seems to be a trend towards older adults.
Yeah.
But it doesn't work when you're talking about things like senior services. You can't, older adult services, that just doesn't work and there's a million of those. So I don't know that we have to use the same term all the time, but that's, we were trying to be consistent, but the way that you worded it sounds better.
Yeah, I think elder should come out. I mean.
I, I don't disagree.
That's the right move, but I think an older adult, I think is more in line with what current terminology.
It is.
For sure. Ms. Hay.
I, I was just going to say, I didn't have a chance to look it up. I'm too tired right now. But isn't the state office, the Office of Elder Affairs? So there is some language consistency, particularly as you're going to be, you know, sort of applying for different things to make sure that you fall within their purview that may argue for keeping elder affairs. But again, not to be resolved tonight, just look into before we make final call.
Okay. I think we're at a good stopping point for this item unless anyone has, well, Ms. Barry?
Well, um, there is on, so I'm wholly supportive of this. It, it took a while to get here, but well done.
Thank you all. And we'll come back with some answers from town council on the methodology which we have to change this and maybe it can just be done at a board meeting, which would be wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much for coming in.
Thank you.
So yes. Our seventh item on the agenda this evening is for the board to discuss the 250th anniversary of the Battle of Lexington celebration invitations to Lexington's sister city, Antony, France. Susie Barry, Chair of the Semi-Quintennial Commission, will lead us through the discussion on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Lucente. So as we all are aware, we have our sister city, Antony, France. Lexington last went to France in 2019. And after that visit, Antony was very much interested in coming to Lexington. COVID happened, time has passed and all of that. And so Tony and Kitty Galitzas, who have been very active in the relationship with Antony, has been, have been in contact with them and Antony is very interested in coming over and helping us celebrate the 250th anniversary. They did propose to them different dates in terms of what we have planned for events. I wondered if they would like to be here for Lafayette's reenactment this fall. And they said, absolutely not. We want to be here for the big day. And so they very much are looking forward to coming in April. The purpose of this on the agenda is to merely confirm that we do in fact want to invite them because there is an official letter that does need to get written and signed by Mr. Lucente, Mr. Malloy and sent to France. That's the official kind of protocol that we go through. And we are reserving a small amount of the Lex 250 budget to pay for some of the things. My understanding is when Lexington went to France, certain things were covered for the elected officials. And also to give you all advance warning that most likely there will be an event with our friends from Antony Fan, France during that very hectic week, which we will all be encouraged and expected to attend in terms of some type of dinner or something. And I will not speak French that night.
Didn't go well when I tried. I thought it went well, but I didn't understand what I was saying. Mr. Pat.
So I recall their visit in 2013 for our 300th and I did go to dinner with them and did speak French. But sure, I thought we had said this a long time ago.
Um, so it's unclear if we ever had the official big discussion here. So yeah, I think what I'm looking for is just consensus and if we need to take a vote and that a letter will be written in Mr. Lucente, Mr. Malloy can just send it. The board doesn't really need to, or it's nothing.
I'm good with that.
That's up.
I'm seeing.
And I think we nominate you to be our official spokesperson. In French.
Yeah, in French.
At whatever event there is.
I mean, I'd do terrible. Joe would do better than I would. All right. I think, thank you, Ms. Barry. So we're going to move on. I think we have consensus on that item. We'll move on to our seventh item on the agenda, which is for the board to approve the collective bargaining agreement. And this is eight and nine is also another collective bargaining agreement. So Ms. Barry.
Ms. Lucente, my husband is still employed by the town.
How many more days?
I don't know. You can ask him. I'm not counting. I'm recusing on these two items.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. Okay. And of course, I should have handed you that piece of paper earlier, but.
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring it.
All right, come back. All right. So our, as I mentioned, the seventh item is up. It's a building maintenance division union, AFL-CIO Mass State Council number 93, local 1703. Mr. Malloy will give the brief presentation on this item.
Yes, and given the hour, I'm going to try to be very brief. So this is the building maintenance contract for the next three years. It is ready to go. The union has ratified it unanimously. The highlights of the contract are that the cost of living adjustment will be 2% in fiscal year 25, 2 and a half percent in fiscal year 26, and 2 and a half percent in fiscal year 27. There's some other wage adjustments that are based on the comparative analysis of similar communities that we made, an increase in the longevity pay. And then some other change, changes in language related to hours, like duties, snow season and holidays. All of it is consistent with what the board previously discussed in executive session. And I have attached a copy of the memorandum of understanding to the select board's meeting packet.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. Questions or comments from members of the board? Okay, seeing none. Questions or comments from members of the audience? Seeing none, I move to approve the FY 25 to 27 collective bargaining agreement between the town of Lexington and the AFSCME, local 1703 Building Maintenance Division. And further authorize the town manager to execute the agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is a vote of four. In a, in a favor, zero opposed and one recusal. Okay, our seventh, or sorry, our ninth item, I just spoke on the other one. Our ninth item is for the board to approve the collective bargaining agreement for the Public Works Union, AFL-CIO Mass State Council 93, local 1703. Mr. Malloy?
This one is very similar to the building maintenance contract. It's for fiscal year 25 through 27 and is consistent with the discussion the board previously had in executive session. The highlights are the cost of living adjustment will be 2% for fiscal year 25, 2 and a half percent fiscal year 26, and 2 and a half percent in fiscal year 27. There's some other wage adjustments also based on our comparative analysis of similar communities, an increase in longevity pay, and then other changes in language related to overtime, how the meal allowance is paid, and then license stipends and snow and ice events. And I've also attached a copy of the memorandum of understanding. The DPW Union just this morning voted to unanimously ratify this contract.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. That's good news.
One other thing.
Yes.
Where you take a vote. I think this is a perfect time in many years. The town has had all of its contracts done before the start of the next fiscal year. So there will be no retro payments for our staff to have to calculate, which is great for them.
That is a big achievement. Thank you.
I think the loudest applause came.
From the people that have to do the adjustment. Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Oh, Mr. Pat. Questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, I move to approve the FY 25 to 27 collective bargaining agreement between the town of Lexington and the AFSCME, local 1703 Department of Public Works. Further to authorize the town manager to execute the agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous four to zero with one recusal. Let me see if Ms. Barry is coming back into the room. Mr. Pitsano, can you send Ms. Barry in if she's out there?
I think I heard the door. She may have, she may be in the office.
Well. It's, colleagues, I did mention at the beginning of the meeting that if anyone had verbal select board concerns and liaison reports to report them now, I'm giving them the opportunity if you want to say anything verbally. That wasn't, no. Okay. I just had one item, which was, I went to graduation yesterday. There was 537 superstars that graduated from Lexington High School. It was a really nice ceremony.
Oh, I do have one thing.
Ms. Hay.
So just as one other piece on the town manager's search screening committee, as I mentioned, we are going to be having the listening sessions on Wednesday. That information will be going out. There also will be an email address for people who cannot attend in person to submit comments. And I have it, I don't, I don't want to read it wrong, so I will make sure we get it published and put up on the website. There is a committee page already, so we'll get it put on that committee page.
Excellent. And before we adjourn, I'd like to announce that the next regularly scheduled work session of the select board will be held Monday, June 17th, 2024 at 6:30 PM via hybrid participation. And our next regularly scheduled meeting will be held on Monday, June 24th, 2024 at 6:30 PM via hybrid participation. I move that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or none? The motion passes forward to where our adjourn. Thank you all.